Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and tonight's committee of the whole meeting. I proudly call the city council meeting to order and I kindly ask our reporting secretary to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Here.
Kassarog?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Caven?
Here.
Hilberg?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Marx, here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin tonight's meeting, as we do all our city council meetings, with a pledge of allegiance and I would like to ask our two appointees, or I should say nominees, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Rebecca and Adam, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, folks, is a new business or public comment. Anyone joining us this evening in the audience have any questions or comments for this council? And I would also ask our city administrator, any questions or comments come through?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right. Anything from anyone? Item 4A, consider mayor's appointments of Rebecca Huliman and Adam Madskall. Adam, did I pronounce that correctly?
Matiskal.
Matiskal, forgive me. To the Planning and Zoning Commission, before I entertain a motion, I just do want to recommend, or excuse me, remind the council members that they received a separate email from me with both Rebecca and Adam's CVs attached. I also had the pleasure of speaking with the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He is gratified and terribly pleased to have a full house yet again, and as these two nominees probably know or soon will, the first meeting is this Thursday. So it's, and the topic is annexing St. Charles, so it should be a good meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to so approve this nomination. Alderman Swanson makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Kassarog makes the second. Any questions or comments? Well, I say before we actually take the vote, we invite Rebecca to the podium. Rebecca, come on up. Your name is familiar to a lot of folks for a lot of reasons, all good reasons. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm very excited to come on board, for sure.
We're excited to have you as well. Now, your background is unique, to say the least. And you're currently consulting in the restaurant world, as it were?
Yes.
Or the food world, I should say?
Yep, in a business called The Business of Food.
The Business of Food.
Mm-hmm, so it's, it's an incubator kitchen, sort of a farmer's market, marketplace, and instructional classes and for entrepreneurs, for new businesses.
That's really cool.
Yeah, so it's based in Sycamore.
Unbelievable.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a bad drive, either.
No, no, just country roads.
Yeah, it's awesome. Anyone from the dais or anyone joining us remotely have any questions or comments for We are, Alderman Burkhart.
Yeah, hi Rebecca, I'm in virtual tonight. I just, in addition to what Rebecca's doing now, she's had firsthand experience with our Planning and Zoning Commission with her former business and she's a, really a big believer in the power of small business, along with, I think, having lived in Germany for a few years and having a whole other career in the childcare world, so, or child education world, so I'm really excited to have such a well-rounded woman and a valued member of our community join such an important board. So, welcome Rebecca.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adam, come on up, sir. Now, those of you who attend either tune in or live to our Planning and Zoning Commissions, this space will look familiar to you. This guy attends virtually every meeting with respect to planning, development. You've attended multiple workshops, as it were, with respect to proposed developments, so we're delighted to have you here.
Thank you, it's an honor.
You have a unique background as well, which brings, I think, a valuable perspective to the board.
Yes, I've been in commercial real estate for approximately 20 years, mainly in the management and oversight, day-to-day operations of multifamily, mixed-use, for-sale and rental apartments.
And last week you and I were talking by phone, you were in Minnesota.
Yes, yes, we're doing a lease-up of an apartment complex in downtown Minneapolis.
So it's still a pretty hot industry overall?
You know what, with, you know, the exception of some snafus this year, obviously with COVID, pretty strong, yes.
Good to hear, that's awesome, that's awesome. To both you and Rebecca, we're delighted that you both raised your hand and said, sure, I mean, the salary's right, the perks are awesome.
That's, that's what I say.
You really can't beat that. Any questions or comments from Adam, by any member of the council, present or remotely? We do have a motion, we do have a second, a roll call vote is in order. Madam Reporting Secretary, whenever you're available, please take the role.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Hilberg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion is approved unanimously, welcome aboard. I don't know if you've had the chance yet to see David de Groot, this gentleman over here, who just raised his hands. He'll be reaching out to you ASAP with respect to what to expect on Thursday evening, and of course, the entire professional staff are at your service as you need them. So, thank you both, very, very much. Now, David, you'll be reaching out probably regarding this Thursday's meeting and...
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow. You guys usually up at 6?
Yes.
Okay. Regrettably, yes. If the council would indulge me, I'd like to just change course briefly. We have a special guest in the audience this evening, his name is Jim Scar. Mr. Scar, if you could join us at the podium. Mr. Scar is aware that I notified the council last week when I received a phone call from Mr. Scar's sister regarding the passing of Mr. Scar's mother, Lorraine Scar, or Lillian Scar, excuse me. As all of you know from reading the obituary, Lillian served the city of Geneva, which was really her minor role, because, you know, being a mom and doing all the extraordinary work, even raising you, Jim, she did an outstanding job. But she also has, I think, perhaps the record of serving four mayors, and we were talking about this at the wake. Mayor Wood?
Mayor Wood, Mayor Crane, Mayor Lewis, and Mayor Adely.
Very good. When Lillian retired, the headline in the local paper read, "The nicest person..."
On the planet.
On the planet, which was perhaps the last most accurate headline we've seen in papers a long time.
Yeah.
A delightful woman, I had the pleasure of celebrating her 90th birthday not long ago, and we enjoyed hours at the house there on McKinley and had a lovely visit, and I just wanted to let you say a few words about your mom and what she meant to, obviously, this community.
Well, you know, thank you very much, first of all, for, you know, taking the time to do this, honor for my mom. I can tell, she, she worked at City Hall as the executive secretary for the mayor and also for Wayne Henninger, the city manager, and that was back in the 1970s and 80s, and she just absolutely loved being here the whole time. She made lots and lots of great friends, and it's just, just a tremendous honor for her and for my whole family that you're recognizing her tonight, so I want to thank you all very much for that.
Thank you. You know, I, Jim, I think you know Jean Fanari, our executive assistant who works with myself and Stephanie Dawkins. When Jean had learned that Lillian had served four mayors, she thought, oh, what a saint.
Yeah.
And she was, she was just a delightful woman.
Well, thank you very much.
A very accomplished woman as well, so...
Yeah, just thank you all very much, it's a great honor for her and for us.
Our thoughts are with you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Good night.
I think it'd be appropriate, folks, if we could collectively as a body, show our respect for not only Lillian's service, but of course for the Scar family, to let them know that we know how important Lillian was to this community and how much we will, as of course you do, will miss her. So if I could just ask for a moment of silence to honor Lillian Scar. Thank you very much. Item 4B, as in boy, is the Tree City USA 20th Anniversary Recognition. Wow. Mr. Nate Lander spokes is with us tonight. How are you, sir?
I am doing well, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Since you already introduced me, I don't have to introduce myself.
Exactly.
Right, excellent, thank you. Good evening, everybody, I just want to take a few minutes to share with, with all of you a recognition that the city of Geneva received just a few weeks ago, as a matter of fact. Arbor Day Foundation reached out to staff and let us know that we have received the Tree City USA designation once again this year. Each year, the city has to reapply for that designation. It consists of four major components in that application, the first being the existence of a tree board and/or tree manager. By default, you, the city council, Mayor Burns and myself make up that tree board and we set the policies and, oops, excuse me, and all the ordinances and everything else that goes with it. That is part of component two, is the existence of a tree preservation ordinance. Title 11, Chapter 10A is specifically dedicated to that ordinance, and then Title 8, Chapter 5 also kind of backs that up. The third component is a budgetary component, or what I lovingly refer to as the paperwork component. There's a lot that goes into that, a lot of costs that go into that, in-house wages for trimmings, removals, stump grinding, mulch, watering, any in-house planting that's done. Contractual numbers go into that, too, so if there's some trees out there that need a little bit more expertise than, than we can handle, those costs go into it. Electrical line clearing is included in that, and something new that they've added here the past couple of years is the hours for, I've lost my train of thought, hours for donated time. So, so when the Boy Scouts come and help us out and plant some trees with us, we've partnered with the National Resource Committee there, they've also donated some time, so those hours can be added to that particular portion of the application. And the fourth component, it was, consists of the Arbor Day proclamation and observation. Unfortunately, this year due to COVID-19, we have not been able to have that particular observation. Typically in the past, we've partnered with the Natural Resource Committee and the Geneva Park District to host an event out at Peck Farm Park, just to kind of educate the population and everybody else that comes out, a lot of fun events out there for little kids, there's ice cream out there, so hopefully next year if we have it, come out and get some ice cream at the very least. So, the Arbor Day Foundation has agreed to waive that particular portion of the application next year, because many municipalities were not able to hold something, so. So why I take a few minutes to tell you all this, well, if you read ahead or actually listened to Mayor Burns, this year marks our 20th year in a row of the Tree City USA designation, and I'll take a few minutes to... (noise) So the Arbor Day Foundation has sent over a few items to help us commemorate this achievement. The first thing that I've kind of selfishly held in my office here for the last couple of weeks is this little plaque commemorating 20 years of Tree City USA. I will put this out in the public spaces of the Public Works Building and proudly display this for anybody who comes inside. One of the other things that we received is, there's a flag floating around here somewhere for 20 years also. I respect the request that if we are able to hold an event and during Arbor Day of next, next year in April, if we could fly that here at City Hall for a week or so, I'd greatly appreciate that. And then, we did receive two of these street signs here, we will proudly display these at State and Brisher and State and Kirk, as you come into town, residents and guests can see it. And the last thing I'd like to add is, while we do have 14,000 Parkway trees to, to maintain, we have room for a lot more. So if you know of anybody or are interested in yourself, don't hesitate to give Public Works a call, we would be more than happy to assist anyone with the application process. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lander?
Nate, can I film you a picture?
Sure.
Nate, flip your mask.
Flip my mask? What, I got it upside down? Ah, well...
Actually, you take the picture.
Yeah, yeah, somebody else takes it.
It's a tree.
Check this thing out, this is cool, man. That's legit.
Hold on, one more. All right, thanks.
Correct.
And you say we have room for many, many more?
Yes.
Theoretically speaking?
2,000, sir.
2,000 more?
2,000 spaces, yes.
2,000 spaces exist for a tree, okay, cool. That's awesome. Thank you again. Item 4C is a presentation of the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation, Geneva East Basin, the Deutscher Report, otherwise known as. We have our Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica, with us this evening to walk us through that report, which I know a lot of folks are eager to see. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you. As the mayor said, Rich Babica, Director of Public Works for the city of Geneva. And, oh, Pete, what'd you do to me? There it is, ha-ha, major walk.
I think we may lose our remote guests, while they won't be visible, they are with us, so...
So, the sanitary sewer report, its evaluation's been ongoing basically since late May, it is literally hot off the presses, we received it today about 4:30. So here we go. Before we get into the meat and potatoes of the report, just a little bit of background on the maintenance activities as related to capital projects. The city of Geneva has seven employees tasked to maintaining the underground infrastructure for the water and wastewater utility, specifically to the sanitary system that translates into 122.4 miles of sanitary transmission mains. We have annual, since fiscal 14, so since fiscal 14 through 19, we've had capital maintenance expenditures of 3.5 million. Those seven employees have inspected and cleaned an average of 11 miles per year, and within the capital, we've lined either strip whole streets or segments of over 55 streets of the city. The crews also responded to over 10,000 work orders, repaired 220 water main breaks, serviced over 13,000 fire hydrants, and assisted the street superintendent with performing over 2,700 hours of snow plowing operations. So they are quite a busy and productive crew. Moving into the Deutscher Report, so the basis of this report, the, the key incident was the seven inches of rainwater that we experienced in May of 2020, which resulted in several properties having sanitary sewer overflows in their basements. What we've basically found, and this is a 46-page report, so I'm really going to try to condense it down into the bullet points, and if you would all like to have 1-on-1 or, or one-on-two meetings with me, I'm, of course, at your convenience at, at any time, relatively any time. So what the report basically found is that north of sanitary manhole 2V-MO4, that is basically in the 800 block of Manchester Course, there is a significant uptick in wet weather flows. We've been monitoring sanitary flows through that manhole, and basically, all the effluent from north of Manchester East, including most of the effluent off of Geneva Drive and Division Street and the Chesapeake area, as well as Westfield, flows through that sanitary manhole. And the typical daily dry weather flows is 0.06 million gallons a day. What we found in May was that that increased to 1.15 million gallons a day. That's a 19-fold increase of effluent through that manhole. And obviously, that is not because people were home for the COVID, we have, we had a situation and we have been investigating that ever since. What the report basically says is that through those 46 pages, that the infiltration and inflow warned upstream rehabilitation of both sanitary system, the lift station, and private sanitary service laterals. But, the study also indicated that there are some additional areas of concern downstream of that manhole. So basically, from where that effluent flows out of Geneva East and then works its way eventually through the Ridge subdivision and working its way down to the wastewater treatment plant. So, we are going to continue working to try to further identify these issues. And then, just to kind of give you a brief definition, inflow is water other than sanitary flow, so those are improper connections, those are your sump pumps, your drain tiles, your downspouts, things of that nature, whereas infiltration is groundwater, so that is water that's coming in through the joints. One of the areas that were looked at in some detail was the Parker Court Lift Station, that is the lift station that services Parker Court to the west of the Geneva East area. What the engineers found is that when the lift station pumps its discharge out of the wet well into the gravity sanitary system, it creates a hydraulic disturbance. And probably the easiest way I could describe that to you is if you would think of an inverted mushroom cloud. So the sanitary force main is pushing additional effluent into the sanitary line, and it creates basically a hydraulic bubble, which prevents any additional flow from upstream from flowing through the system until that is transmitted through the gravity line. During the flows of the heavy rain event, or prior to those flows and then since it's stabilized, that lift station runs for about a half hour a day between two pumps, so each of those pumps runs for about 15 minutes a day, which is not a lot of flow. But, during the high-flow events, it jumps up to 1.5 hours, which again, is an incredibly small amount of flow, but the way it interacts with the main channel causes a disturbance. And as we'll see coming up, there, there is not, the, the study did not find any one particular causal factor that led to the issue, other than the seven inches of rainfall over 48 hours. But it was most likely a number of smaller issues that all contributed to having, causing a failure. The suggestion of the study, for now, is to redesign the flow path of how that sanitary lift station enters the main channel. So instead of coming in at a 90-degree and coming into a solid, creating a bubble of maybe having it drift or graft into the system a little bit more at a gentle angle, so the main channel can still have its flow while the lift station is pumping. But, the scope of our evaluation did not allow for such a detailed study, so there is going to be additional work by an engineering firm to look at those issues. Then there was the sanitary transmission system that they investigated. They reviewed over 27,000 linear feet of sanitary transmission main within the Geneva East area. What they found is that the VCP, and we love our acronyms of Public Works, is vitrified clay pipe and ductile iron pipe, there was about 11,500 feet. The vast majority of the areas identified for concern were within 11,500 feet of vitrified clay and ductile iron pipe. What the recommendation is, is to perform air tests, where basically, they run equipment up the sanitary line at every joint, they inflate an air bladder, and if it leaks, they then inject chemical grout into those joints. Chemical grout installation is a relatively reasonable expense for internal rehabilitation. But, they're also recommending CIPP, cured and placed pipe, for root intrusion, so where the joints have separated enough to allow for tree roots to get in, and again, wherever there's a loose joint or where there's tree roots, it allows for infiltration to get into the system, and that is what we're trying to eliminate. Also during the review, and this came very early on, this was actually identified before June 1st, there was a segment repair on Geneva Drive at Lyons Park, where there was a partial obstruction inside the sanitary main from previous repairs that was dug up and repaired and replaced by the Public Works staff within 48 hours. The repair also identified over 114 manhole structures, almost, it, it's almost probably easier to look at the map to see which manholes they didn't identify that need to be serviced, but those range in from having leaking joints to cracks, loose manholes. Just to kind of give you a reference of how old that infrastructure is in that area, that subdivision was designed in 1987. Personally, that means I was a senior in high school, and it was constructed by 1993, which on the five-year plan that I was on in college, at least I was out of college and working full-time by that point. But, this is getting to be typical for a subdivision, it's, it's pushing 30, 35 years old with the infrastructure, and now is the time when we start seeing issues that require some more intensive maintenance. And then the smoke testing, which you may or may not have heard from your constituents, but it wraps up tomorrow, and what they've identified is four sanitary service cleanouts, so those are the actual service laterals for the residents that are allowing or are not as watertight as they should be, which we'll be contacting them shortly. And then they also identified 41 sanitary manholes that reinforced their inspection of the 114 structures. Speaking of sanitary service laterals, by city code, sanitary service laterals, which actually connect your domestic plumbing into our sanitary mains, are private property. Deutscher is recommending that these sanitary service laterals be air-tested and grouted, much as the same as the sanitary mains, because the concerns that we've identified in the sanitary mains cannot possibly account for the 19-fold increase in, in flow. And when you consider that subdivision, you've basically doubled the sanitary mains for that area if you consider the service laterals. However, because they're private property, that would require construction easements to be secured from every property. What they've also identified is 21 flat services. Now, a typical sanitary sewer main, a service lateral, when it ties into the, to the city's main, does what's called a drop. So if you think about it, it basically comes out of the house at a certain slope, and then it does a rather dramatic 45-degree drop into the top of the sanitary main. What we've identified in that subdivision is that there's 21 flat services, and so basically, these services come in either at a very low connection angle, or actually, in some instances, at the bottom of the pipe. So what that means is that even in dry conditions, when the sanitary system is just getting its normal flow, those service laterals already have effluent inside of them, they never truly empty. And if there was something that I had to say was an item of concern, or at least the main... an item of concern, or at least made me look on, this probably explains a lot, is these 21 services. So what does that mean? Deutscher engineers are recommending that the city install or coordinate with those 21 property owners, as well as the six property owners that had sewer backups already, to install an overhead or a backflow prevention device of their choice. So this is above and beyond kind of the recent program that was adopted by the city council. And then they're also encouraging us to continue with our sump pump inspections throughout the subdivision, because again, a 19-fold increase is very hard to quantify as to where that came from. So, I wanted to save this for last, because my fear was that once you saw these numbers, you would stop listening to me. We will use these estimates in upcoming budget preparations. I broke them out into three categories. The first category is costs associated with the air testing and grouting of the sanitary service laterals. So out of an engineer's estimate cost of just over $2.1 million, 1.1, almost 1.2 million of that is for the sanitary service laterals, which again, are private property. By city code, the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain, not the utility. The next line item is the cost to install the overhead sewer and backflow system for the 27 identified properties. Which of those 27 identified properties two have already had their backflow or overhead systems installed, and five are currently in the process, and I think several of them are on tonight's agenda to be reimbursed? That using a standard cost comes out to $405,000. And then there's the system repairs. So that includes the grouting of the city's sanitary system, the lining of the sanitary system, the 144 manholes that need to be repaired, as well as anything else that was identified in a report that was city infrastructure, comes up to just over a half million dollars. There are two additional costs that will have to be utilized during budget preparations. That includes the additional study for the Parker Court pump station. And the study does have several recommendations for that, but in interest of trying to keep this moving along, I did not include it in the presentation, but I'm more, again, more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one at your convenience. And then further investigation of the downstream flow study. So that is what is causing the choke points from the ridge from Geneva East down to the wastewater treatment plant. So that is the presentation. Try to keep it relatively brief and on point.
Put the people back up.
Sure. We'll just wait a moment so we can have our friends remotely join us again, and we'll open the floor to comments or questions for the director. Any comments or questions from the dais here in the council chamber? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Babica. You mentioned the neighborhood was built in 1987. And Geneva has a lot of neighborhoods that have been built during that same time period. Do we have any sense if we're looking at this in many other neighborhoods throughout Geneva?
When we had the sanitary sewer overflows off of Westfield Course, it was fairly isolated to a very tight geographic area. We continue to evaluate, as a matter of fact, the Deutscher study, the Geneva East area was just one segment of the neighborhoods that they're studying. They're also looking at Pepper Valley, the Fargo area, down by Western Avenue, some others areas that we've historically had either backups or issues with. But we did not have anything within the city during that rain event that even compared to the impact on Westfield Course. But chasing I&amp;I will probably be something that not only Bob and I will do till the day we retire, but probably our successors, because it's, the system is constantly aging. The vitrified clay pipe, there is, you know, that was the sewer main of choice from the turn of the century until PVC really became readily available in the 80s. So it is going to be something that we are going to constantly be chasing, and that is why we have our crew, those seven men, those seven crew members are constantly televising and cleaning, looking for, trying to prevent what those residents suffered over on Westfield Course.
You mentioned 21 flat surfaces. Do we have any feel if those exist throughout Geneva? And when these homes were built, would that have been inspected to ensure that that flow rate or the level was proper when they were first built?
I can't answer that second question.
Okay. Or do they shift over time?
Not to the point where they become flat. If services do shift, sometimes they'll develop dips, which is they'll develop a sag or a dip because the bedding wasn't proper or the ground has settled, somewhere in between there. But it's not common.
Okay. And my final question has to do with the Parker Lift Station. Was it a common code, if you will, to come in at a 90-degree angle? Or would the code have at that point been to bring it in at an angle and smooth it in?
The city code really doesn't address that, and neither does the... It wouldn't have been a best, again, I don't want to, I don't want to second-guess my predecessors' predecessors. But I think it would, I know it would have been done differently nowadays.
And that was really what I was getting at. Not to slam what happened in the past, but if we were to build a new lift station now, would it come in at a different angle?
It would. They come in at a fairly shallow angle, and they're designed to kind of create a good disturbance as when it enters to pick up velocity and really push that effluent down channel.
Okay. And of the costs that you showed on the final chart, obviously, how much of that would be included in our current budget, if any? Or is this all new cost?
I don't want to put Bob on the spot, so it's his budget, so I'm going to let him at least have a say in what happens next.
That was the call-a-friend move.
Right, yeah. Bob Van Gescam, I'm the superintendent for water and wastewater. I think we can go ahead and, with the current budget, shift some money around to where we can get the $500,000 to do the system repairs. But that would be the most for this year, so.
So you're 1.6 short, 1.6 million short, basically. Okay. Thank you.
One of the things that we watch very closely in the current environment with Finance Director Cruz and with the city manager, Dawkins, is our cash reserves and where the flows are, where our balance statements are on a monthly basis. We've been very conservative with our expenditures and when we initiated projects. And this would still be one that we would hope to get initiated this fall, because it's not as weather-dependent as some of the other projects such as patching, but it is one that we are going to watch very closely to the bottom line.
Anyone else, Alderman Kossarob?
I just had a question about the magnitude. So you said it went up 19-fold. How much would a rain event have gone up without all the infiltration and all the other issues?
Well, again, I think I go back to the analogy of it wasn't, you know, it was a sequence of bad events that just finally created a cascade of failure. If you remember, before we had that seven-inch rain event back in May, we had a very wet spring. We had one of the wettest springs on record. Again, seems to be getting tired of saying that. So the ground was super saturated. It wasn't going to take any more water. And then we had a massive downpour within that 48-hour period, and the ground just couldn't take any more water. So wherever it could find a void or an opening, it was just dumping water into it left and right. I would prefer not to go through another seven-and-a-half-inch or seven-inch rain event in 48 hours. But that really was the tipping point, because the system was handling itself right up until we had that heavy rain. It just, we couldn't handle it anymore.
So maybe I didn't ask my question right, because I'm not sure if I, maybe I misunderstood what you said, but the rain event itself, from, sorry, put my glasses on, from .06 to .115, how much would the rain event itself have increased?
Well, that was, it wasn't, those are the flows through the system. So the typical flow in a dry event is with a .06 million gallons a day. After the rain event, and it probably, in all honesty, was higher because it took us a day or two to get the flow meters up to that area, it was over a 19-fold increase. So that was caused by the seven inches of rain previous to when we got the flow meters up there.
So that had nothing to do with the infiltration and inflow and all that kind of stuff?
It had everything to do with infiltration and the inflow.
It had everything to do with it?
It had everything to do. It was the final straw that broke the camel's back, in my opinion. And it's really, there's no scientific proof in that. That's just based off of 30 years of maintaining infrastructure as eventually, infrastructure just reaches its breaking point and you have a bad day.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, then Alderman Bruno?
Mr. Vat, you might share what the waste treatment plan handled during that period of time, because that'll give him a better perspective. I think you'd share those numbers. It was pretty incredible what went through our facility or...
Yeah, the typical flows through the wastewater treatment plant off of Bennett, or actually off of Chrissy, ranges between 3.1 and 3.5 million gallons a day. During that rain event, it was in excess, it was actually pegged over 19 million gallons. We were performing what's called a bypass, where we were treating the effluent with chlorine and pushing it through the system, because we simply couldn't treat it fast enough.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Rich, for the presentation. I think this is all well and good, and we need to address this as a public utility. On repairing the private service lines, are we in any way constrained as a non-home rule community? Can we just go ahead and do that so long as it doesn't cost residents? What are the complications of us addressing private service lines?
Because the service lines are outside the city right-of-way and not in a city utility easement, we would have to secure a temporary construction easement from each property owner, which would then have to get approved by the city council. And typically, they're anywhere from six to 12 months in duration. And then there would be, as part of that easement dedication, a hold harmless indemnification by the property owner for the repair work. So it will be a lengthy process securing those easements.
Okay. See, I wouldn't imagine you'd get any pushback from any private property owner. I don't know if anyone wouldn't want their service main operating properly. And just as a couple of points of curiosity, when you're doing the cured and placed pipe, what's the minimum length that you can do on something like that? If you see, if you scope a leak, you know, can you cure just like six feet of pipe? Or do you have to do a quarter mile or the entire segment?
Well, I think the shortest stretch I've ever seen done is 20 feet, 10 feet on either side. But typically, we'll go from manhole to manhole just because from an operational standpoint, it's easier to do it that way.
Okay, I think that's good. Thanks. Thanks a lot.
And just for reference, manhole to manhole is typically 200 to no more than 300 feet. Sometimes I forget that you all don't know what I know.
Anyone else remotely? Any questions or comments for the director? Or anyone in the council chamber? I have one question, Rich, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If there are 21 flat lines, hypothetically speaking, 18 of the 21 property owners said, yes, let's do it, if the three choose not to, does that mess up the whole system? So in other words, 100% is required?
No, I just think that those three property owners would have to be made very clear that they are assuming a... We know that there's a potential.
Sure.
And by not doing this...
The risk is there.
You're assuming some risk there for the next insurance claim.
Oh, Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out to everybody, in case anyone is not aware, this is the worst. The residents have had it, but this is not a new problem for the residents of Geneva East. It's been an issue for at least a decade that I know about, probably longer. So just wanted everyone to be aware of that fact. It just never hit this many people all in one storm. So just something to keep in mind and take into consideration. Is Rich still at the podium?
Yes, yes, he is.
Okay. So I'm, Rich, I'm curious if, how long do you think these things, this is speculation, but how long do you think these issues have been a factor? I mean, obviously, they didn't just, it didn't happen overnight, the aging infrastructure. What's the, you mentioned the typical time of needing upgrading. I'm just curious, you know, if we can use this as an example to begin this process sooner, to prevent these things from happening in other areas? Just thinking out loud here.
Well, again, respectfully, we have been. We've had $3.5 million of capital expenditures since fiscal '14. And we've either lined, repaired, or rehabilitated over 55 streets or significant segments thereof throughout the community. So this has been something that we have been doing seriously since the city enacted the last rate adjustment, where they put on the capital adder to allow for this additional work to get done. Related to your first question, those sanitary services, the flat ones, have been there since those properties were built, which, looking back at it through a historical lens, makes a lot of sense now. The properties that have had the backups, when you look at the identified locations, are the houses that have been experiencing the backups. So there is, this report does connect those dots, at least professionally for me, that this is something that is probably, the residents, as you're right, have been dealing with since their properties were built back in the 90s. It's just such a fine line. Having a flat service really eliminates that emergency reserve of being able to have a little bit of buffer, because you don't have that drop. It's just immediately flowing back up the service lateral.
Okay. And another question I have about the overhead sewer systems. So when these homes that have been identified with the, with the flat service lines or the flat services, once their homes are protected with the overhead sewer system, I know that can, everything is backing up. It still has to go somewhere, and the overhead sewer can cause that overflow just to go to your neighbor's house. Is that still the case?
Well, I think that was one of the assumptions made earlier when we first started looking at this by a number of people. But everything's tied together. The overhead ejectors or the backflow devices are going to address the installation issues that were done back in the 90s when the builders built the homes. So that is going to address that issue. We are going to aggressively pursue the city structures, as well as the manholes, either through this fiscal year or in the next fiscal year, as much as resources allow. But the one thing that the industry, meaning the water, wastewater industry is... thing that the industry, meaning the water, wastewater industry has identified, is that even if you line your entire system, and you could just think of this extrapolated, every property had their average sanitary service connections between 60 and 90 feet. So, if you added all those service laterals to the city's infrastructure system, you're gonna at least double, if not triple, how many sanitary sewers you are. So, if you are not going to address that whole 50% or more of the system, and even though it's not our system, but it is aging just as rapidly as a city system is, if they're not being aggressively maintained, you're, you're not going to really resolve or take a, a lion's chunk out of that, of that influx. So, that's why Deuschler is taking the rather unusual recommendation that the city pursue this be, uh, and within this subdivision to help eliminate that INI because that, it really is, uh, the only way. We, we will identify, I'm confident, we will identify the downstream choke points and we will resolve them. But, again, um, the whole goal of this is to eliminate that INI because not only is it lead the potential to have backups into the basements, but then again, we have to treat that as waste at the wastewater treatment plant, which costs more power, which costs more energy, which has, uh, is just, just a snowballing effect there. Costs more money to operate the system. There's overtime involved, but then there's the environmental impacts of having to, you consume that additional energy through the system. So, um, our whole goal is to, is to reduce that INI to a, a comfortable point where we can all sleep soundly through a thunderstorm. That's my goal.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, thank you very much to you and your entire team for everything you guys have done, um, to help rectify the situation. I, I know the residents appreciate it and I do as well.
Anyone else? Questions or comments for the director? There's no action to be taken tonight. This is simply a presentation. Alderman Kilburg?
Just, uh, there may be some residents, uh, that are, uh, watching this evening that are involved directly in, in, on some of this on, uh, on Westfield and, uh, in Geneva East in general. And I know that, uh, there was a meeting with many of those residents, uh, several of those residents in, uh, July, and I think that, uh, as a point of information, uh, I know that you're in the process of scheduling a meeting, a follow-up meeting with those residents to share the, uh, the information that, uh, that Deschler's shared with us. So, I appreciate your help with that as well.
My pleasure.
If there's nothing else, I will excuse our director, Mr. Babica.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item five, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening from any member of the city council? Item six is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Any questions? Any comments? If not, recording secretary Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
The consent agenda passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 11, bills for payment. We kindly ask our recording secretary to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $4,32,229.78.
Is there a motion to approve the bills as presented?
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet, uh, on the city website. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Alderman Bruno makes the motion to approve the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in your council packets. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Alderman Kocarog. Any questions or comments? Please take the roll.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, the municipal bills for payment have been approved. Committee of the Hole Items of Business, item 12A, is to consider ordinance number 2020-28, providing for the payment of the outstanding parking refund revenue bonds, series 2008, of the city of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois. Is there a motion to so approve?
Bruno, so moves.
Thank you, Alderman Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kocarog. Any updates? Any, a brief summary by all, uh, excuse me, city administrator Dawkins, and questions or comments?
Okay. And again, um, if item A passes, then item B would be necessary, so I'm just summarizing both items. Um, as discussed at the committee of the hole meeting, these items relate to the commuter parking revenue bonds that were issued in 2008. There are two payments remaining, uh, one due on October 1st, 2020, and one on October 1st, 2021. As requested at the COW, staff contacted the bondholder, BMO Harris, to see if they'd be willing to waive the bond covenants. While they're not willing to waive the covenants, they did agree to accept prepayment and forego the interest payment for 2021. Related to the bond payment then would be a resolution authorizing a budget amendment for the additional expense, uh, for the final bond payment, and that's presented as item B. Uh, and Director Cruz is here this evening. If you have any additional questions.
Questions or comments for Director Cruz or the city administrator, Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess, uh, my only question would be, they're, they're not going to waive the covenants, but we're going to pay off the, the entire bond, so it really is irrelevant, the covenants at the end of the day. So, that's just clarification there, and they're waiving the next year's interest, uh, 7,000, so this amount is reduced from what we saw two weeks ago. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else remotely or here in the chamber? Seeing no hands, hearing no pleas, roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, item 12A passes unanimously. Item 12B is to consider resolution number 2020-65, authorizing the execution of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget amendment, which was related to item A in the summary provided by Ms. Dawkins earlier. Is there a motion to so approve?
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Alderman Maladra makes the second. Any additional questions or comments for either Director Cruz or Ms. Dawkins? Seeing none, hearing no pleas, roll call vote, please.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Item 12B passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump down, folks, to item 13A, under the rubric Presentation of Ordinances, Resolutions, Petitions, and Bids. Item A reads, "Consider Ordinance Number 2020-30, granting a zoning map amendment to rezone property located at 15 Woodlawn Street from the B3E Business District to the R3 Medium-to-High Density Single Family Residential District." Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Maladra. Ms. Dawkins?
So, the applicant, John Henry Builder Developer, Inc., is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from the B3E Business District to the R3 Medium-to-High Density Single Family Residential District. Prior to the applicant's purchase in 2015, the property was used as a single-family home. The single-family use was legal non-conforming use in the B3E District. The applicant removed the non-conforming use and established an office, a permitted use, in the B3E District. The applicant is now looking to revert the property back to the original single-family use. Section 11-13-4C of the zoning ordinance states that once a non-conforming use is discontinued, it shall not be renewed and a subsequent use of the building shall conform to the use regulations of the district in which it is located. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property, the R3 District, in order to reestablish the residential use. The applicant is not proposing any modifications or alterations to the existing building. The property is designated for single-family residential use in the city's comprehensive plan. At its meeting on September 10th, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. Um, this evening, we do have the applicant, John Zabinski, with us, and also Director DeGroot, if you have any additional questions.
From the council remotely, any questions or comments for either the director or our guest, Mr. Zabinski? Alderman Marx has a question. The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, David, I did a question for you. If, if we, if we rezone this and that building's torn down, what does that change? Does it change lot coverage also, or, or what does this kind of a change mean, just in case the building's ever torn down?
Um, well, if the building is torn down, you would have a legal lot of records, so you would be able to reestablish a residential use on the property.
Would that be multifamily then or single residential?
Just, just single family.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else remotely or here in the chamber? Questions for the director or our guest, the applicant? Seeing none, hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye. McGowan? Aye.
If I may trouble those remotely to perhaps turn down their sound or go ahead and mute until you're called on, that might prevent the feedback.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Item 13A passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We're at the adjournment portion of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Swanson. A roll call vote is necessary. Madam Recording Secretary?
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
He's on mute.
You're on mute.
A thumbs up will suffice?
Yeah, that'll work.
That'll work.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt? Kocarog?
Burkhardt, aye.
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Next week, we use the middle fingers. This meeting is adjourned.
All right. I'd like to call the September 21st Committee of the Hole Meeting to order, please. Uh, my name's Craig Maladra. I'm one of the aldermen from the 5th Ward, uh, which I share with Alderman Swanson. Um, let it be noted, all committee members are present? Yes, all right. Uh, new business and public comment. Um, there is no public. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Chairperson Maladra. Well, my apologies because I meant to, um, convey this information at our city council meeting that just wrapped up, but it's regarding the subject of trees, so, um, Nate Landers has left the building, but I hope he also hears about this. Um, before coronavirus took place, I was thinking about parkway trees and how the city of Geneva has a matching program where if a resident wishes to replace a parkway tree or to, or to plant a new parkway tree on their property, they pay $150 and then the city of Geneva covers the other half, the other $150, which is the, the full cost of a new parkway tree. And it's a nice-sized, uh, parkway tree that the city kind of looks after a little bit, you know? So, um, I thought with 10 of the, uh, aldermen, if we each were asked to contribute $15, that would be the $150, and we could kind of make a nice little, you know, presentation to the city on Arbor Day, uh, just saying that we all, you know, got together and contributed these funds to help the city's parkway tree initiative. Well, then coronavirus came along and Arbor Day, obviously, was during the, you know, well, one of the worst parts of that. So, I, I decided it probably wouldn't be a good time at that point to really say anything. I kind of waited. But now that, um, the city of, of Geneva has been honored with the designation of being a Tree City USA for 20 years in a row, I really wanted to get it in during tonight's, you know, gathering. So, I just would like to express my thanks to everyone here on the city council and, um, to our city clerk, Roger Godaskin, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing the name, um, who also contributed. Um, Alderman Clements contributed, as well as Alderman Kocarog. So, and I believe Mayor Burns, I don't remember if you gave any money, but I know you said that you wanted to contribute as well. So, um, I, I know for sure that $185 has been turned into the city, and I've gotten receipts for all that. So, I just wanted to, um, mention it, and I'm really appreciative to everyone for helping me with my little, uh, fundraising initiative for the city and to also encourage other residents. If you're interested in finding out how you can, uh, have a new parkway tree planted and you want to get together with some neighbors or just, you're able to pay the $150, as long as funds are in the account that, that the city maintains, the city can match your dollars and, uh, provide a new parkway tree on your property. So, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything for new business? Ben?
Good evening. Assistant City Administrator, Director of Administrative Services, Ben McCready. Um, thanks for allowing me a minute to speak with you this evening. Uh, one thing I want to share is, over the last few months here, But again, we'll be providing some folks opportunities to interact, one-on-one, or actually small group settings, virtually with SPAC members. And then, of course, we'll also be sharing some opportunities where if someone doesn't necessarily have a, you know, working video camera, or maybe they have spotty internet access at the time, we'll provide some additional opportunities for them to provide input, all with the goal of helping gather information to assist with the city council's strategic planning later this year. Again, stay tuned, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody at home? Nope. All right, moving on. Item 3, approve committee of the whole minutes from September 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Alderman Swanson? Second? Alderman McGowan? Do we have to roll call?
Just to clarify, it was McGowan who seconded?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I heard Cavan, so that's why I got confused.
She raised her hand.
Okay. Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
I can't vote yet.
Oh, okay. Not till the next item.
Yeah, not till the next... All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item 4A. Recommend suspending rules of the committee of the whole to permit the chair to vote for this meeting and to vote on all action items on the agenda. Do I have a motion for this? Alderman Swanson again. Second. Alderman McGowan? Do we have to roll call?
Just to clarify, it was McGowan who seconded?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I heard Cavan, so that's why I got confused.
She raised her hand.
Okay. Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart.
Casarag?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
I can't vote yet.
Oh, okay. Not till the next item.
Yeah, not till the next... All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item 4A. Recommend suspending rules of the committee of the whole to permit the chair to vote for this meeting and to vote on all action items on the agenda. Do I have a motion for this? Alderman Swanson again. Second. Alderman Casarag. Thank you.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, item 4B. Considering a draft ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter IV, Schedule V, reducing the speed limit from 40 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour on Kaneville Road from Randall Road west to the city limits. Do I have a motion?
Bruno, so moves.
Alderman Bruno, do I have a second?
Second, Alderman Marx.
Alderman Marx, thank you. Any questions regarding item 4B?
Do you want an introduction?
What's that?
Do you want an introduction?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
It's okay. In February 2020, WP BK Engineering conducted a traffic study on Kaneville Road from Fargo Boulevard to Peck Road. The speed study was requested in response to a resident who lives on Ginger Lane and expressed concern about the safety of exiting the southeastern entrance of Ginger Lane at Kaneville Road. The results of the traffic study and recommendations were received on March 5th. The traffic engineer recommended a reduction of the 40 mile per hour speed limit to 30 miles per hour for this stretch of roadway. We do have Chief Passerelli here this evening to answer any additional questions. I would also note, there were some questions that were posed prior to this meeting that are also on the website.
Any questions? Alderman McGowan?
I just have a comment. I think this is such a great idea. I spent so many years driving my children to the middle school, Middle School North, along Kaneville, this section of Kaneville, and it always blew my mind that the speed limit was 40 miles per hour, and then it goes down, and then all of a sudden, it abruptly drops to 20 miles per hour for the school speed zone. So, I think that this is, it's really great that we're discussing this item this evening, and I hope that we can lower the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Casarag.
Thank you. Are we talking about the study and everything, or are we waiting for Commander Passerelli to introduce it? Is he going to talk at all, or no?
Not unless you have questions for him.
No. Well, I did have one question. I don't know if it's for him. Some of the recommendations at the end were about pavement marking and things like that, and I was just wondering why that wasn't necessarily included in what the action plan was.
Question.
Hi, good evening. Eric Passerelli, Chief of Police. I know some of the recommendations towards the end of the study talked about the pavement markings, talked about raised tables or speed humps. That's not something that the city of Geneva has ever really entertained, for a number of reasons, primarily wear and tear on vehicles going over those areas. Studies that have shown that once someone comes over a speed hump, they then accelerate to get to the next one, and also wear and tear on snowplows and emergency vehicles, that sort of thing. I know Director Babica, right now, is the pavement marking program. I think they're doing some of them now, the crosswalks. I don't know if any of that area is included, but...
Do we know, Director Babica, when that might happen for this area?
The pavement marking program, basically, the city is divided into five zones, and we go through each zone individually. Right now, we're working on the east side of town, so I would have to research to see when that zone would be up for the next type of marking. We also supplement through internal pavement markings through the street division. The type of paint they use doesn't last as long, it only lasts about 12 months, and that really gets addressed as resources a lot. So, I'll have to research that a little bit more and get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other?
And I just wanted to add one comment. If this is, if this is recommended for approval to the city council, let everybody know that it may not be immediate. We have to order signs and all of that, so just know the approval is the first step, but once the approval's done, then we can move forward with ordering the signs and making sure that that gets put up.
All right, thank you. Alderman Marx, did you have a question?
Well, Stephanie really answered the question I was going to ask, how fast it goes in the place, but also, I'd like to thank the police chief, because, chief, if you remember, since I've been on the council, when you back on the commander, we've been working on this project on the streets, so thank you so much for getting it done.
Looks like that's it, so roll call.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Burkhart, aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. 4D. Consider draft resolution authorizing bid award and execution of a contract with Chicagoland...
You're on C.
Excuse me?
We're on C.
We're on C?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Item 4C, I apologize. Consider draft resolution authorizing bid award and execution of a contract with Schroder and Schroder, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for 2020 sidewalk and curb maintenance project.
So moved.
All right.
Okay, so this project entails the removal and replacement of defective sidewalks, curbs, and curb ramps on various city streets. We received 10 bids that are summarized in the packet. Schroder and Schroder's bid represented the low bid. They have done this type of work for the city in the past and have performed satisfactorily. We have, oh, you just appeared. We have Assistant Director of Public Works, City Engineer Brian Schreiber, present to answer any additional questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have questions? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Okay, hi, Mr. Schreiber, thank you for being here. I'm just curious, because I noticed one of the metal tree grates along Third Street has kind of lifted up a little bit, and I haven't submitted a repair request or something to the Public Works Department yet, but is that something that would be included in this type of sidewalk repair work?
Not typically, no. I mean, that would be addressed through the Third Street program that's run for that...
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
That'd be included with the Third Street program, but it's kind of separate from what this addresses.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is the program that addresses like service requests from residents reporting trippers or...
Exactly.
...grates or something like that. The tree grates are something that staff will take care of.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions, roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Bruno, aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?